Kenny?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Heather?
Clint?
Here.
Dan? Amy?
Here.
David?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Tricia?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum to conduct business and the meeting was duly noted. I remind you that you please put your cellphones away and if you want to speak about anything, please acknowledge me before you speak so we can keep the minimum of side talk and interaction. Thank you. Okay, next. Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the reading of my mission statement, the school district of the Menominee area by embracing their unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Is there a need for anybody to change the agenda order or approval or addition? Jim?
I ask that consent agenda number five, action to approve the resolution agreement to the Department of Ed, be moved to action item.
Okay. Get that, Jim? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, okay.
Discussion item 3A and action item 4A, do they notice the time?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Do they notice the time?
Yes, they would. It was okay. Yes. Anybody else? Recommendations and commendations? We have one?
Natalie Tapper. I've been trying to think of something funny to say. Fortunately for you, I'm ready for it. Okay, so I'm supposed to read this. For Natalie Tapper, for your participation in the 2019 formal exam interview, the school board or the Board of Education of the School District of Menominee Area recognizes your thoughtful attention to depth of knowledge, grade level appropriateness, universal design, and highest issue for you, Natalie.
Okay, highlight on you, and I can tell by looking out from that audience, we have quite a few that are here in honor of highlight on you, and I'm assuming Wendy's out there in the crowd somewhere.
Can we do our thing?
Yep.
All right, let's go, girls.
Not quite sure what's going on, but just as a brief introduction, for the September highlight on you, I've had the opportunity to stop by the high school a couple times and watch our amazing girls tennis team play, and Coach Hastings has done great job for many years, and I was super impressed with not only the high level of competition, but the great sportsmanship and just very, very good job representing our school. So, head coach, Mrs. Hastings, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, hello, I am Woody Hastings. This is my 36th year of coaching tennis at Menominee High School. I was 12 when I started. Back then, you could coach when you were 12. I did take one year and I was at UW Stoudemire Coach there, but otherwise I have been here since the day I started teaching back in 1982. And so I could not be more proud and more thrilled to like to see the wonderful girls that participate in tennis on the Menominee High School team. Carla Taylor is over here, assistant coach, some of you know her from the middle school, and she is right there by our side, working with this wonderful group of girls. We already have 19 matches in, we started on August 13th, and if you'd like to come see us play, we have a home match tomorrow night for our City Dus against Oakley North, and then I think we maybe have three local matches before our season wraps up. So please come on and watch us play, and at this time, the girls would like to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Olivia Lightness, I'm a senior at the high school, I play number one singles and I'm a captain.
Hi, my name is Lauren Flashenrein, I'm a senior, I play number one doubles and I'm also a captain.
Hi, my name is Kelly Wachepie, I'm a senior at the high school, I play one doubles and four and I'm also a captain.
Hi, my name is Emma Hastings, I'm a sophomore and I play number two singles.
Hi, I'm Ava Zaborski, I'm a junior at the high school and I play number two doubles.
Hi, I'm Kira Sumauer, I play number two doubles, I'm a class Ava and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hastings, I'm a junior and I play three singles.
Hi, I'm Mark D1, I'm a junior and I play three doubles.
I'm Lindsay, I'm a junior and I play three doubles.
I'm Olivia Baz, I'm a junior at the high school and I play number four singles.
I'm Ally Wells, I'm a junior at the high school and I play number four doubles.
I'm Jennifer Hakes, I'm a senior at the high school and I play number four doubles.
I'm Jeremy Vincent, I'm a junior and I play number five singles.
I'm Kylie, I'm a junior at the high school and I play number five doubles.
Hi, I'm Sydney, I'm a junior at the high school and I also play double.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, I'm a junior and I play number one JV doubles.
Hi, I'm Grace, I'm also a junior and I play double.
My name is Asia Yang and I'm a sophomore and I play number one singles.
I'm Golda Chisholm, I play two singles on JV.
I'm Sally Swolfschool, I'm a freshman at the high school and I play number two singles for JV.
I'm Emma Solbra, I'm a junior and I play doubles for JV.
I'm Kelly O'Val, I'm a junior and I'm on JV.
I'm Amelia Leal, I'm a freshman and I play double.
I'm Conchita, I'm a freshman and I play doubles.
I'm Harris Johnson, I'm a freshman and I play doubles on JV.
I'm Elena Bixby and I play doubles on JV.
I'm Amelia Leal, I'm a freshman and I play doubles on JV.
I'm Jason, I'm a freshman and I play doubles.
I'm Vanessa Clay, I am a freshman and I play doubles.
I'm Mike Campbell, I'm a freshman and I play doubles.
I'm Laura Miller, I'm a freshman and I play singles.
I'm Emma Ryan, I'm a freshman and I play doubles.
I'm Krista Bruner and I'm a sophomore and I play singles.
Thank you. Can you please excuse us for departing, but we're off to a team meal. Thank you very much. Okay, so next up is two representative communications, and we have two new young ladies from student councils that are going to do that this year, and that is Mesa. Mesa, sorry, Wilson and Emma Lewandowski, take it away.
So my name's Emma Lewandowski, and a few things about me, I'm the vice president of the student body, I'm varsity volleyball captain this year, I'm an NHS member and I work at Wisconsin Credit Union, just a little bit about me.
And I am Mesa Wilson, I am the student body president of Menominee High School, I am a junior this year, I am a varsity soccer player, a National Honor Society member, a Spanish Post Secretary, a link leader, a advocate member, a forensic member, an employer, and I also an employee at Walmart along with coaching a youth soccer team.
All right, so first thing that we're going to talk about is sports, so volleyball, we played our first conference game on the 5th of September and won one set and then lost three, so we lost the match but won one set. Our next game is tomorrow at 7:00, so feel free to come, it's at home. And football, played Lake Mounds, Holman, Chippewa Falls, and won all games so far. Golf got seventh place in their last meet, they competed then. Swim has competed in three ways, in a relay's invite in Wisconsin Rapids, and their next invite will be on September 12th at Oakley Memorial. And tennis, like they said, as they were here, they have nine wins and 10 losses, and the first conference win and two conference losses. Moving on to the first day of school, we just kind of wanted to tell you guys how we felt that went. Overall, we thought it went really well, and all of the students seemed to be generally pretty happy, obviously some were like, oh, I don't want to be here, but I think that's it every year. I think the student body had a really positive reaction to our new administration with Mr. Drake and Mr. Muren, and the credit union office in our high school got remodeled over the summer, so the students had a fun time seeing that, and they got to see all the updates, and that was a good first day of school. And so before the first day of school, we had a link room day, so this is just when the freshmen all come in and they get to feel welcome, and they have like link leaders to welcome them to the high school, and that is a really good thing that we have going on at our school. I remember when I was a freshman, it was just a really good way to kind of get warmed up to the high school and kind of look at my classes before all of the upperclassmen intimidated me. And we have a lot of different activities and clubs and activities here, so it's also a great thing for the freshmen to see. That's how I got involved in a lot of the clubs and organizations that I was in freshman year and continue to be, and so that was a really positive aspect of the first day for freshmen as well. Moving on to homecoming, so homecoming starts Monday, September 23rd, and ends Saturday, September 28th, which is when the dances, and we have our coronation assembly on Friday, September 27th, and our parade as well at 4:00 PM for the Pledge of Legions Center, so feel free to come, that is a community event, and we welcome everybody. This year's theme is Hollywood, and the whole student body is very excited about that. We've got some fun dress up days, and we're really excited to dress up and have red carpet and have everything all laid out, and then we had class meetings on September 5th to help encourage students to get involved, and the different things that they could get involved in were the skits, school decorations, the games during the assembly, the dress up days, and then making a quote for the parade, and it was really, it was really great to see all the classes get really involved. We had a lot of kids sign up, we encouraged every kid to sign up for at least one thing, and we pretty much so succeeded, we had all of our sign up sheets full, and everybody seemed really excited, which is awesome for school spirit, which is the main point of homecoming along with community outreach, and so that was really good to see. One thing we are doing this year, which is different from past years, is we are making a homecoming button, and we'll be selling those to the student body, those are $2, and we talked to the athletic director, and he's agreed to allow that to be a fundraiser for student council to go back into our grant program, which goes back into the school, and those buttons are $2, and they give you into all the home games for the week, which I believe every sport or fall sport has a game or meet of some sport or some sort at home other than maybe country golf, which is great. And so that's a fundraiser that we're doing this year to get some more money to go back into our grant program, and then as a council, we're working on the coronation assembly, the skate assembly, publicity for homecoming, the homecoming dance, and then the parade. So we have a meeting tonight to discuss those things. Are there any questions?
So we met during lunch last week, and it's always a new thing for our students, but you guys knocked it out of the park, great job.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Okay, next is community communications, and before the communication comes on, I'm going to just read this. This is a time for board members to listen to your concerns and freely express your opinion on the issue. You are speaking at a public meeting and your comments may appear in a newspaper and other news media. All individuals who can comment during the public comment period are reminded that information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. Comments that are identified by students shall be subject to the Wisconsin People's Records Law and FERPA. As such, student information that is not directory data as designated by the board, for example, individual student behavior or progress records shall not be discussed in this forum. Comments that identify personnel are subject to the applicable personal record statutes in section 19.36 and Wisconsin statute. The board may inform the speaker that his or her comments are not permitted if in the opinion of the board it is not subject to release under the above applicable standards. Even with the above disclaimer, please note that a period of public comment is a type of designated forum for speech that generally speaking has a substantial degree of protection under the First Amendment, including a requirement of viewpoint neutrality. The board typically will not respond to questions or concerns in this portion of the meeting. Please indicate if you would like the board president to direct a member of the administration to respond to your concerns. Okay, Mr. Hanson? Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Dick Hanson, I live at 2402 Panorama Drive. I'm here to speak about action agenda item to approve the WASB resolution regarding the retirement of Native American mascots. I say don't lend your authoritative view to affect other school districts. Your election as school board members puts you in a position of authority. Do not use that authority to promote an agenda that isn't based on voters' needs. This is a very decisive issue, but not to the Wisconsin Attorney General, not to the Department of Public Instruction, not to the State Superintendent of Schools, not to the state legislature, and not to the voters of the Menominee School District and the students of the Menominee School District. Not to the governor of the state of Wisconsin, and not to the Court of Appeals of Wisconsin. So how can the school board members resolve this issue? When it comes time to vote, simply vote to decline, abstain. Let everyone know that your vote is important, more important than this issue. Thank you.
Okay, board members, superintendent communication. Any board members?
Hi, I brought a poster. Shameless, but sort of shameless, my kids as well as Chris's kids are both going to, are all going to be in the movies, Menominee Theater Film is putting that on, and there's about 70 people that are participating, I would say the vast majority of that are kids from the school district. I have kind of been scoffing now recently, I'm listening to the rehearsals, and let me tell you, it is going to be amazing, so I just thought I would bring this poster, I don't know if there's something, but you can put it up in here or somewhere, so anyway, highly encouraged.
What are the show dates, Tricia?
October 11th, 12th, 13th, 18th, 19th, and 20th. And I do know the tickets are actually really going fast, I tried to order a lot of tickets for the opening night and I can't remember some things, but anyway, so I just wanted to make sure it was okay.
Okay, and then I have, first of all, anybody else, I'm sorry. Okay, I have some brochures that I'm just going to leave, they're about a blanket exercise about Native Americans, and basically what it is, it's just a community thing where you can go and learn about, it's blanket exercises where you, where Native Americans you learn about how they lost their land, and it's like a blanket exercise. You start with the full blanket, and then it gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and there's a debriefing afterwards, and I think there's even a meal in there somewhere too. But anyhow, those are brochures for anyone that wants to take them, administrators, teachers, whatever. Thank you. Dr. Joe?
Well, the girls took most of my thunder with the start of school, it really has been a great start, and I really appreciate all the work of our staff, our students, our administrative team, appreciate the flexibility of our parents and families, also the bus company, Menominee Transportation, it's such a big task each year to, you know, figure out the bus routes, even though they, the route itself stays pretty similar, the actual pickup points changes quite a bit each year, so kudos to everybody who's had a hand in getting us off to a great start. Just a few other things, I did send to the board members calendar activities for QIC, our Quality Improvement Committees, those committees will be beginning this fall, and then also a Google form was sent to the entire staff in terms of gauging interest and appointing those committees, so we're happy to have that ready to roll, we're looking forward to engaging our staff with that. Also, we will be having a school perception survey this fall, and we're looking forward to that input as well. So between all the work we've done on strategic planning, and then all the work we're going to be doing with the engagement surveys in our QIC groups, we really are placing high value on staff input. Also, just wanted to invite board members, if anybody's interested in sitting down over the next few weeks, each quarter, we try to have face-to-face meetings if at all possible, I know that some of you, we've already had that opportunity, I just wanted to formally invite the board for that. And then lastly, we have several upcoming professional development opportunities for school board members, we're very fortunate this year, the school board association is having the regional meeting here in Menominee, and that'll be October 23rd, so if you're interested in any of those activities, please contact Jamie and she'll help you get registered and signed up. Thank you.
Mother J, revenue expenditure reports for the month ending June 2019.
Okay, we'll start with the June first, just keep in mind that the June revenues and expenditures are unaudited yet at this time, they won't be finalized until the auditors submit their report later on in this fall. So we'll take a look at the June expense by function report first. So for the general fund 10, overall percent spent, we ended the year at 99, 99.12% compared to 97.87%, so expenses were somewhat higher. Some of the key areas, if you take a look, the inter-fund transfers, that is over budget, that has the excess fund transfer into funds 46 and 27 that we did at the end of the year, so that we'll need a budget revision, we will do 18, 19 budget revisions, we'll have that up for discussion at the next board meeting, so those items will be included in that. Other items, we had the $430,000 general tuition payments, that came in slightly higher. We had some summer school programming that was higher, and so those costs were up, and then in the $149,000 other non-program transactions, that was slightly over budget as well. If you recall, we had our membership and summer school membership audit in the spring, and we had overcounted some of the minutes, and so we had to back those out, but yet our overall FTE count was still up, so this reflects that overage there, but overall the revenue side is up higher. So those are the highlights on the fund 10 side. Fund 27, we spent 97.57% compared to 99.40%, so slightly less, and in fund 50, we're at 100.08% compared to 92.19%, so expenses were higher there. We did have higher participation, so we also had higher revenues, pupil sales were up, adult sales were up, and then also we received higher revenues, so food service actually ended the year in the black, so. The next report we'll look at is the expenses by object. And this report includes all funds, not just fund 10, 27, 21, and 50. The percent spent to date for 18, 19 in June was 97.99% compared to 97.83%, so overall pretty close, pretty close to budget each year. You'll notice in 17, 18, it's about $10,000 higher than it was, a little over $10,000 higher than in 18, 19, but that, that was due to that debt refinancing that we did in December of 17, so that includes that debt service in there. And then the June revenue report. The general fund 10, we ended the year at $37,841,721 and 1 cent, about $135,000 over budget. In fund 21, we received in $391,771 and 24 cents, and then in fund 27, we received in just over $6,49,641.58. Does anyone have any questions for June?
So, will this then change when the, when the audit occurs?
Well, the audit is ongoing, these reports encompass everything at this point in time, if the auditors have something, when they're finalizing the report that they feel should be changed, they have that option to do that.
Well, one of the rules of books, filling our clothes until the audit's done.
Correct. Yep, and that's usually in November.
I just have a couple of questions on the by object, just a couple line items that consist, look like they're consistently running off the tracks a little bit. Utilities would be the first one, and then textbook, there's a huge variation, can you explain those?
Yep, with the utilities, it's hard to project from one year to the next with the weather. We increased it higher last year, hoping to make up for that, it was still slightly higher, so I'm going to increase that again this year. With textbooks, it really, it's really based on the curriculum that they're purchasing, and I think last year, I believe right, last year was higher, because there was more curriculum purchases made.
Thank you.
So then in August, expenses by function. We're at, let's see here, 7.01% compared to 5.74% last year at this time for the general fund 10. In fund 27, we're at 1.42% compared to 1.14%, so both of those slightly higher, and then in fund 50, we're at 47.44% compared to 2.82%. That percentage of group's purchases may encumbered but not paid for yet, so that's why the food service percentage is higher. The expenses by object, the percent to date, we're at 5.74% compared to 7.3%, again slightly lower, but that due to bill timing. If you take a look at some of the items, for example, district insurance is less, it all depends on when those invoices come in and are paid out, could be at the beginning of the month, or it could be at the end of the previous month, so you could have variances there. So, you could have variances there. And then lastly, our revenue report for August. Pretty minimal activity for the month of August, which is typical. We received in Fund 10, local funds, that totaled $82,031.52. In our gift donation fund, we've received in $6,658.26. And then in Fund 27, we haven't received any in any revenues yet, which is typical. We started receiving our aid payments in September, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Liam. I entertain a motion to accept the consent of agenda, and remember that number... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking for it, I forgot that. That's just informational. Any questions on that? Now, I entertain a motion to accept the consent of agenda as presented, but remember that number six, I'm sorry, not number six, number five has been moved to the action agenda.
Hold on. Second.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none? Well, Texas, thank you. Okay, going to number three, discussion item.
It's so...
Yeah, it's really slow today.
It's really slow. It's not...
Yeah.
It's not... It's fine, if you're curious about me, I wouldn't vote you. She'll fix it.
Yes?
Yes.
Or something. I just... Got that. Okay. Discussion item, number three, A, Robert's Rules of Order for Considering Resolutions.
Okay, so I asked this to be put on the agenda, because when we had the discussion about the resolution from the Wausau District last time, it was stated that if one person was opposed to the resolution, it would move forward. And as a body that governs under Robert's Rules of Order, to me, that just seemed wrong, because it should be a majority vote. And having one person, basically, when we're a board of nine, it really becomes a board of one, and that's just not right. So, I just wanted to bring that discussion forward, that normal Robert Rules of Order with resolutions and normal boarding procedures, I think, should hold sway while we're doing any of the last two resolutions, too. I don't see why it should be different.
Anybody have any comments, questions left there? David?
Do you know why historically, this board hasn't put forth statewide support for things unless it's been unanimous?
I do not know, but I will say that Margaret Brish, when she was on the board, and she had sent me an email today, saying that whenever she would, she was always really good about coming up with resolutions. And whenever the board voted, she said she always had one board member who always said no. But it was majority at that time.
So, that changed with leadership down on the board, did it?
I don't know. Yes.
I know when I was on the board, we had one of the multiple state budgets, and because it wasn't unanimous, the board didn't want to send that out, just because it wasn't, they never received full support.
Chris?
As I recall, at the state presidential election event, it was the board president that made the decision, of course. And I think it was because he said that it was a bad year, as was for a lot of farms that year, to think about raising taxes to support our schools. But that decision seemed to be unilateral, and there wasn't even a motion to vote to make the decision. So, that seemed to be an indication of a board president that acted out of her power at that time.
This came very late in the day, but I went ahead and, first of all, I looked at Robert's Rules of Order that Joe sent, and also the policy. And I also took it upon myself, and I wrote to Dan Rossmiller, who is an attorney and also the legislative person with WASP, and he's the one that kind of asks for the resolutions, you know, to come forward, and they're due by September 15th. And he said that it was a simple majority vote, is what he said. And it came late, but there is a legal comment in your board notes. David?
Is he involved with this resolution at some level? It seemed like he was just knows that he had... Helped him in some way.
Not that I'm aware of. What he does is, he just is the one that reminds people, and is behind the scenes in making sure that the resolutions are, that any board in the state wants to bring forward goes to, goes to him. And then, basically, what happens is, they all go, and then they're voted on in November, usually, to go forward for the state detention. Chris?
In the Robert Rules of Order, it does showcase the fact that, of course, there was going to be some dissent in any resolution, so it makes very clear that it was done by voting, and the acquisition votes could take the results for the resolution. So, by what you guys provided for us, it seems pretty clear that it has to be done according to the rest of the laws, which we passed in each of those motions.
Are you ready to vote?
This is a discussion.
Yeah, there's really no vote, I mean, it's just kind of...
No, I'm sorry.
It's just senses. Yeah, whatever order, basically.
Well, it goes to the action agenda, so that's what I just asked. So, to have a motion then, to vote the action agenda to approve WASP resolution regarding retirement of Native American mascots.
Hold on. Excellent.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Jim?
Well, I think it's very important that we pass this for a number of reasons. One, of course, is that in our district, we have students that are Native Americans that are going out to other places, other districts, competing. And if there are someplace where there is a Native American logo, and the students there are doing things that are highly disrespectful to the opposition, let's say, if they play basketball, football game or something, this becomes very, very mean to our own students. And also, back when we had the logo of India name, there was actually an incident that took place in Eau Claire, where they had put up, one of the Eau Claire schools had put up signs before a game, that basically had a picture of a person in a pot being boiled and it said, "Killed the Indians." So, it affects our students. You know, now we're not Indians, so it was the Mustangs. But at the same time, there were Native students in the Eau Claire school district who were very offended by this also, felt very demeaned within their own school district, like they were evil, and in their own school. It was all reaction to our logo. So, it's something that plays out all over the state, and no matter whether it's here or there or some other district, you know, these things, there's people everywhere that it harms. And so, I understand totally why the Wausau District had asked for public support around the state in order to help remove these logos. I mean, this has been going on for a while. The Boy Scouts, they have a program called the Hard Rock Arrow. I would never get enough scalp to give in it. That would be really cool, actually. But they based all of their ceremonies and stuff, they had, you know, dressed up with feathers and breach clouds, and painted the faces and all this stuff as part of the ceremony. But they have completely reversed their policy, you know, the last year, saying, "No, we were wrong. We're stealing Native American stuff, and we're down the way, and no longer are we going to do this." So, it's just one example of many places where people have realized, given the history of the way Native peoples have been treated in the United States, that these mascots are wrong, and they need to be undug. So, then we're being asked to help do that process, and so, I can strongly support this.
Okay.
I guess I go back to, when this was a big controversy in the Menominee School District, it was something that was taken up by the school board, eventually led to a recall, a lot of contentious issues and things of the kind. I see no reason why our district should be involved in something that gets to the point where we're telling other districts how to handle their own business. We have enough things to take care of in our district. We don't need to be trying to police other districts and tell them what to do. I know, you know, at the last, last time we discussed this, Jim, he said that anyway that doesn't support this resolution is a bigot. And I find that really offensive. I mean, it's not, it's not our position to tell other districts how to run their districts. We manage what we did in Menominee, and I think it's our position to stay out of their business and to mind our own affairs.
Well, as I just gave you the example, our affairs are interconnected with everyone else's affairs. There is no such thing as an isolated school district. We're all in this together. This is, I mean, this is why WASP has this resolution process, so that districts all over the state can work together to end things like bigotry. And I'm sorry you were offended, but I'll stand behind that statement. If you're not actually actively working against something, you're tasked with supporting it. You may not contribute, you may not go out of your way to do things, but unless you're actively opposing something, you're tasked with supporting it. So, I mean, that's why WASP has this. You understand how the resolution process works, correct?
David?
Yeah, I understand what WASP meant with the resolution. It does not require any action by the Menominee District. This resolution has already been forwarded. We do not have to weigh in on it one bit. There's no reason for our district to get involved in this controversy. The idea of stirring up the pot here in Menominee and reliving what we went through many years ago, to me, is ridiculous.
Well, I find it not supporting our students, I'm sorry. I find it not supporting our students to be just really, really not supporting our students. I mean, we're here for all of our students, right? Or are we not here for our Native American students? That's the question. Are we here to make sure that when they go out and compete in athletic events or any other thing, we're prepared? We got their back. And if we don't pass this, after being requested by the Wausau District, and we're not the only district, by the way, that they requested it, and I believe other districts have also passed this resolution and supported it. So, this is like a civil rights thing. I mean, do we support, are we there for our students when they go out to the world? Or are we not? If we say that we don't want to pass it, then we're really telling our Native students we don't support them.
David?
Was the gal that is heading this up to the Wausau involved in the Menominee process a few years ago?
I doubt it.
Not that I'm aware of. Chris?
The gal's up on the Ho Chi Minh Supreme Court, and she's writing on the part that happened for people, to try and make sure that the state of Wisconsin is supporting the obligation to make sure that they treat all peoples in ways that accord their dignity. And so, this is a, this is a gal who's still in trouble. She's on the Ho Chi Minh Supreme Court. This is a very well-considered resolution. If you read down at the bottom the resolution, the American Psychiatry Association has signed off on the bottom. There's a whole host of people that explain the trauma that Native peoples experience when they see the misuse of their history. This is an unbelievably important learning experience for kids that take history of this country seriously. And we do, as we're going to find out later, when the history of subjects of study is brought up. It's a moral subject of study. And when we think about what the resolution is addressing, I used to teach at a reservation in McCultray, and that's in Wisconsin. And I tell you, I was teaching future teachers how to teach history. And the thing that broke my heart is, they didn't even know their own history. But I remember Rose, who was about 77 years old at the end of the course, she's like, "What's with white people? You know, haven't they taken enough?" And when we think about what rights we have for a lady claiming culture and identity, if you look at the mascots, they're blatant. I mean, they display Native Americans as savages, spear chuckers. Wisconsin should be proud of its Native American heritage and be honest with it. I also noticed when I dropped my sons off for swimming lessons, that the team that wins the Menominee Intergirl Basketball Tournament, they proudly call themselves the Indians still. They won the last three years in a row. You can't pick and choose where you try to defend culture for our people's economy. You have to do it all the way down. Because when people see gaps in what their stance is on bigotry, they can think that your stand against them, then we need to begin with. So, I support Jim, I support the resolution, and understand that this is just people that are stirring trouble. But if the resolution is put forward by the Supreme Court, that's the Ho Chi Minh Court.
I have to say, I respect what was just said, but in my mind, Menominee never was the spear chucking Indians. It was presented very respectfully. And to drag this issue back up again, if I understand correctly, this came up in the mid-'90s. I hadn't even graduated from high school yet at that point, and I went to a school that had a really horrible example of an Indian nomenclature, and they changed it. And Menominee went out of their way to become the Mustangs and eliminated it. And I agree, I don't think we need to be policing the rest of the schools in the state. They need, they need to do the right thing, because they waited Menominee did the right thing back in the '90s. It's not, it's not without.
Okay, I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. Number one, yes, it was contentious way back in the '90s, but then when it actually changed, there was very little contention. So, you know, attitudes change as it got, you know, later on, and the board unanimously voted to change from the Indians to the Mustangs. The other thing I'd like to tell you is that Madison, Eau Claire, and San Prairie, at least those three, I know for sure, because the woman in WASP told me that those three, and it was in a paper for Eau Claire, unanimously supported the resolution. Also, if you go to Camp Randall Stadium to a game, and it's the Indians, they will tell you that you are not allowed to use that name in there. You have to talk about, like, for instance, if it was the Menominee Indians, they would just say the Menominee team, the Menominee. They could not say Indians. So, that's a couple of things that I just wanted to put forward. Chris?
Some points have already been covered, obviously, very divisive issue. I was actually in high school in Menominee in the '90s, and I graduated a Menominee Flying M, pretty much, because it was between the Indian and Mustang. They had decided, basically, what the new mascot would be. A couple of other points that weren't brought up. I didn't write this resolution, obviously. I don't like the resolution. It's a little vague. Opens it up for a lot of different symbols. I think there's a lot of gray area in it. And then, kind of my other comment on it is that we've already made the decision. I mean, look at what Menominee did back in the '90s. I don't think we need to re-vote on this again. To me, it seems like dragging up contracts and voting on them a second time. So, I don't think it needs for you to revisit it. I think we should be working towards things like maybe student achievement, perhaps, or something like that, something productive. But I do respect everything that's been said here, I just think this is wasting our time.
Anybody else? Let's hope.
If you're not logged in, you can voice hold the G P two. Okay.
Just four answers.
What, some others here?
Okay. Just curious.
Paul's name.
Pardon me?
Why is Dan Asher over there?
I didn't write.
Heather shows up sometimes.
No, I don't think so. I, I've been, heard the, okay.
Okay, so it's four to two. One extension, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. C four money.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is the action agenda, remove the resolution agreement with the US Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Yeah.
All right, good. We fresh it. Oh, yeah, we fresh it. Okay.
Any discussion? You're done. Let's hope.
Kevin, if you want to make your way up to the microphone, that'd be great, thanks.
All right, any discussion items? And buildings and grounds in your report?
All right, so the Buildings and Grounds Department had a pretty productive year received pretty busy. I supplied you guys with a couple of my list of many, but not all of the accomplishments that we made throughout the year by locations. We'll start now at the high school. I'll talk to a couple of things for each, each location. At the high school, considerable effort was put into upgrading the field house and the pool areas. So we got the new flooring in the field house. We installed a foil up eight-foot doors, the weight room, a new ER store at the weight room, pool starting blocks, timers, and a basketball pool. Some pretty good improvements over there. The entire south busload was resealed and stripped this summer. We worked with Monomni Transportation to make it more user-friendly for them. So that was a good, some good small changes. Something you may have noticed too, the city made some modifications to Fifteenth Street. They put in the multi-street, which while doing so, we also got a turn lane into the north entrance of the high school, and turn lanes leaving the southern exit of the parking lot, which will help with alleviating congestion out there. Similar to the high school, the middle school also saw some improvements in Twenty First Street, again by the city of Monomni, by installing turn lanes and some new parking zones. The thought there is to, again, improve traffic flow and for safety reasons of kids crossing the road by the soccer fields between our properties. So addition to that, at the middle school, we also resealed and painted lines on the entire parking lot system over there and entrances. So that, along with the grading improvements from last year, which are working out well, we're seeing some pretty nice improvements of the grounds of the middle school. Next door at Oakland, we did some security improvements there, as with some other schools. We put a roll-down security door at the receptionist area at their office. As minors, it sounds, we paid a lot of attention to floor care at Oakland. Some of the floors there, I don't think have been refinished properly in a number of years, so we stripped a lot of floors and are just trying to make things kind of look a little better. Like we spoke before, we lost some trees due to the winter kill over there, so we removed those ourselves and the pedal contract to come in to grind this stuff up. It's a big change at first, but I think it looks pretty good and kind of opened the school up a little bit. Across zone at Wakanda, we did a couple large steps this summer. One of them, an entire wing of the school, needed carpet upgrades. They weren't at that point yet, I don't believe, but over time it had degraded. So we did something to the effect of twelve classrooms and office work areas this summer, and the corresponding painting to kind of tie it all together. Along with that, we repaved the district-owned portion of the parking lot of Trump, which is essentially the drop-off move. So that work just got done last second, I guess you could say. Line painting will actually be tomorrow, if permitted, so we're still kind of wrapping that one up. Out at Naff, one of our projects this summer is we took an old storage room and transformed it into a, basically a laundry room, put it on, had a washer and dryer installed, rented it to the outside. And what else over there? Oh, we concentrated on paint. That needed some upgrading, specifically, so we painted the gym, the hallways, the offices. Really gave it a good screw-up. Downsville was much the same, a lot of painting down there as well. And then we installed a tile on a couple of the restrooms at Downsville. River Heights, they had a new sign installed, so we took down the old sign, which was getting pretty rough, and it wasn't at the correct entrance of the school. And then we installed a new one by the new entrance. That was a little bit of a challenge, had to go in front of a border zone and appeals to get that one to pass, but it ultimately worked out, and the sign is up in operational now. By our metal site, like I think I spoke before, I dedicated a staff member to the By our Metal Site for the summer. We saw a lot of nice improvements out there. We have a lot of work to do yet, but this summer we did some trail maintenance, we improved the driveway, we improved the drive from the main educational building up to the cabins, built some mow spots, put in culverts, kind of thing. We opened up the secondary parking area for another entrance for those that want to hike the grounds. Then we worked on the cabins, we've got them all in clothes, new soccer, Asia. We stained them, they're looking pretty good. Next summer we hope to get some metal roofing on them and kind of wrap up the cabins. Also, for the site, you may have noticed, I haven't been putting my solar productions, pumpbacks in my board reports. We've been having some technical glitches with the cell service, communication of the solar array to our monitoring website. Everything's working. I can go out there and see the energy production by looking at the panels, and our, and our electric bill's in the negative, so it's working. And for two weeks now, it's making back to communicating correctly, so once we get that rolling up, we'll put those stats back in the reports. All right, district-wise, just some odds and ends. You know, we had the school safety improvements, we got a lot of new cameras, window film, fencing, things like that. We're able to make some end-of-the-budget-year purchases. Winter was a little tough on us last year, tough on everybody last year, so we improved our high school stone removal arsenal. The falls for the tractor, so bucket filler tool, cab, that kind of, that kind of thing. We traded in one of the older problematic wall mortars to a new diesel zero-turn that should give us many years to use. Got a genie left that fits through all of our doors, so that'll be a nice addition. Kind of winding down, our staffing is doing well. As of last week, we filled our last position for custodial staff. Our newest hire will be starting next week over at middle school. We had a retirement and one transfer this year, which kind of created a domino effect of, of staff movement, but that's all settling out now. We went with three staff, grounds care this summer, much like last summer, and two painters, and it seemed to work very well for us. Definitely saw some pretty good results, so. That is the year in a nutshell. Just coming up next is studying the first couple of years of the third-year plan to see what adjustments need to be made. And the big next thing will be the sports complex, a plan to advertise for bids in two to three weeks to that, and we'll get that all rolling soon.
Thank you.
Some of those genie left. Do you use that to change lights in the, like, gym or something like that? Is it still stable, like, all the way up?
Yeah. I think it's two inches narrower, good for some reason. I think Wakanda was the...
I just pictured being this way.
No.
Somebody up thirty-five feet.
No. No, it's, it's like...
Okay.
Couple things. I've done a great job, things look really good. There's a big pothole, I'm serious about this. When you're coming into the parent drop-off at the high school, you got all the nice asphalt, you get in right in front of, like, the visitor parking, there's a pothole like that big around there. And then the other one down at Wakanda, you've got all the nice new asphalt. Is there going to be a shoulder going in there at all?
Yes, that's something the maintenance department will be working on.
Already kind of narrow, people winding through you, you get in there in the wintertime, it's going to damage asphalt and everything else there. And then my last counter question actually was on the Eagle Scout project that's going on at the environmental site. What is that for? And what is, I guess, how is it progressing?
That's a good question. I'm actually going to meet, meet with that student this week, and I think that's the same student that was working out there. If it is, I think there's another train of thought for projects going on, but I think Wednesday I'm going to be able to answer that better.
I just noticed on Facebook, and I know the kid that's doing it, a lot of work's going into it, I think a lot of volunteers out there.
Okay, so I haven't seen the cabin?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the progress of the cabin yet.
So is there anything to add or not really?
The Eagle Scout project was, began with our Wakanda fifth-grade team about three years ago. Our Wakanda fifth graders do an incredible design project through Frank Lloyd Wright Project, Project Based Learning, and one of the things they did about three, four years ago was noticed that out at our environmental site, it was not handicap accessible for students with wheelchairs. So they designed, the entire team actually, all students in fifth grade that year, designed a project in which they came up with designs for a student in a wheelchair, and the winning design, then we found, at the time, a middle schooler who was working on his Eagle Scout project. And then my husband earned an award through 3M National to throw some money at it. And so we have some seed money that started, and then they started working on building a handicap accessible site, if you will, on the environmental site.
Well, it looked like a tremendous Eagle Scout project, a lot more than most of them under tables, I'd say. Thanks, Mark.
I meant to ask my eighth grader what the name of the custodian is, that middle school bar probably knows. But whoever this guy is, like, he's, they love him, and I cannot remember it, Bart Janover.
Right.
Yes, yes, oh my gosh. So when we went to the orientation, we were walking in, and he's walking in, and he had his own, like, fan, like, the students just loved him, so I just wanted to patch that on.
I saw where they gave him his standing ovation at your, at Seven, so that's great.
He's the last one we introduced.
Like I said, it takes everybody in this district to be, you know, an essential part of our, our district, so that's great. Okay, I have one question. Knowing you saying that you are going to go for bids on the sports complex lighting, I was wondering, Joe, how it's coming, because I know we were not, we weren't going to pay for that or give our part of the money until they, they can look their part. So I was wondering where that is.
I can put a report together if you'd like, and I think that's hard to take care of.
Okay, okay. I don't remember, but maybe. So, best one, I just curious. Next, summer school report, I assume that's Mary?
Thanks, Cam.
Apparently, summer school just ended a month ago. Better? So, summer school was amazing. It's amazing because of the foundation that's been built. Susan has really worked hard to build such a solid foundation. We did a little bit of remodeling this year with offering four period days and moving the camps to the high school. Otherwise, we have a really, really solid foundation. So just some highlights. Summer programming is really all-encompassing. We have four weeks of academy, which has classes at the high school and at River Heights. We have Friday field trips. We have summer camps, three different summer camps that are a week long each. We have Boys and Girls, a raffron care, so some students send, go to Boys and Girls Club, they have extended programming during that time. We have a lot of, like, basketball camps and orientation meet-and-greets. We have collaboration with UW Stout in this, we also have a collaboration with CDTC. Our enrollment for camps, initial enrollment was two fifty students each, later on you will have exact enrollments. Our four-week academy, we had two sixty-seven at River Heights, and our high of eleven-hundred at the high school. Friday field trips, anywhere from thirty-one to sixty students went on field trips around the area. We also offer credit recovery, forty-seven high school students recovered credits during summer school. We offer a lot of online coursework. These were some of the courses available with our collaboration with CDTC this year, which was a new collaboration and very successful. We have eight online opportunities, we have eighty, probably eighty-plus school district employees, twenty-two employees that come out of our district. We have about a hundred offerings across the board throughout the summer. Seven weeks of programming equals a great summer. We give free busing for all four weeks and the three weeks of summer camp. We provide free Project Santa meals during some, the four weeks of summer school. Just some highlights of some of the things that happened during summer school. Food service is amazing. We feed about a thousand kids at the high school and six hundred every day at River Heights. It's breakfast with breakfast and lunch, or six hundred at the high school. When, you see the, at the bottom, that was a theater class that came to highlight the other day. We had some new classes, game on, cheer and pom, American Sign Language. The theater and puppetry was very, very well-received. Some pictures from some of those courses. We also collaborate with Parks and Rec. So the cheer and pom was the Parks and Rec coursework, and we have a really great collaboration with them. Our Friday field trips, this year we went out to the Steyer Farm, always a highlight, we went to the Rossbeck Museum, where they have a Fulton's Maker Space that was really well-received, went to the National Eagle Center in Wabashaw, and then the Children's Museum. We had art camp, STEM camp, and this year newly-made team camp, where the only requirements, you had to work together. It could be whole group, it could be small group, it could be partner work. Some really, really innovative things the teachers came up with during that course. This is a little historical data of summer academy, starting from 2016. So you can see a high this year of eleven-hundred and three at the high school, River Heights two sixty-seven. Little shift this year, we, any student that was going to be in kindergarten went to River Heights, so they did not go to the high school. And I think we found that to be a really great fit for those students, and we're able to meet their needs better. Art camp, STEM camp, and team camp has been named different things. It's been Pirate Camp, it's been Superhero Camp, this year it's Team Camp. So it's a lot of fluctuating attendance. It's the last camp of the summer, so I think sometimes that may, may affect our attendance. It's, it's a huge collaboration, it really takes a village, it's everybody here up at the ASC. we went out to the Steyer Farm, always a highlight. We went to the Rossbeck Museum, where they have a Fulton's Maker Space. That was really well received. Went to the National Ego Center in Wabashaw, and then the Children's Museum. We had art camp, STEM camp in this year, newly made team camp, where the only requirements, you had to work together. It could be whole group, it could be small group, it could be partner work. Some really, really innovative things the teachers came up with during that course. This is a little historical data of summer academy, starting from 2016. So, you can see a high this year of eleven hundred and three at the high school, River Heights, two sixty-seven. Little shift this year, we, any student that was going to be in kindergarten went to River Heights. So, they did not go to the high school. And I think we found that to be a really great fit for those students. We're able to meet their needs. That's better. Art camp. STEM camp. And team camp has been named different things. It's been Pirate Camp, it's been Superhero Camp. This year, it's team camp. So, a lot of fluctuating attendance. It's the last camp of the summer. So, I think sometimes that may, may affect our attendance. It's, it's a huge collaboration. It really takes a village. It's everybody here up at the ASC. It's human resources, because we have to hire all these people and get them contracts. And it's food service, and it's maintenance, because it's custodial. And it really does take a village, and really is, everybody has a part in summer school, whether they really know they do or not. So.
Any questions?
I'm trying to spot, with the online courses for high school students, you know the participation level wasn't that... I'm sorry, I should've...
Yeah. I can find that out and get it too. I really don't know. And...
We have to cap it. Every, almost every class, we have to cap.
So, they are full?
They are full. Yeah. And, you know, so, I wanna say first come, first served, but it's really hard, because high schoolers will enroll, and we always have to beg our high school teachers to sometimes teach in overload, because it's, we have a lot of kids who wanna take it, but they do cap it.
Even the health class?
Huh?
Even the health class?
Yeah, yeah. Riley does the best he can to handle as many as he can, but, yeah.
I do know the answer. There are sixty-some kids that took online health. Sixty-plus.
My son did, and he swore never. It's hard.
Well, and we've heard that, you know, the online health class is very difficult. But anytime you try, you wanna make sure we're different versus the curriculum. So, it's, it's not a free test by any means.
Yeah.
Do we, are these online courses in South Dwyer within the district, or are we contracting off for them?
There's a little bit of a mixture there, but, yeah, a little bit of both.
Do we go through the place in Appleton, the virtual, where there are WBS?
So, yeah, so some of the courses, yes, but not all of them. So, online health, for example, is a whole grown course. Our M.I.E. course is a whole grown course as well. Personal financial management, depending on how you're, it's been a double course. It's also kind of a new class.
What's the next one?
David.
I just wanted to say, Mary, that I think a great program. We've all been through the kids for the Friday field trips, chasing pigs and all that. Yeah, I saw those kids gave all that. They bring pigs out of running all over the picture. Running all over the...
They love it, too.
It's fun. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Mary. Nice, nice part point. Good job. And nobody had to dress up like a pirate or here on this thing this year. All right. Discussion, I can see program resource reviews timeline. I'm thinking that Brian, that for you?
So, this is a process that has been ongoing for several years, most recently updated as far as the order that we are using back in 2014. We have two programs up this year for review, those programs being arts and physical education. We will start the work with those departments. We've done some pre-work with them, but the main work will start here, tailored to September, early October, included meals and follow-up as far as the programs that were reviewed this last year. In most cases, this timeline lays the review of the standards at the state level by one year, to give our staff an opportunity to become familiar with those ones. So, I have to answer any questions that people have.
Chris?
Where does theater and drama fall into these standards? And I saw, because I saw Wisconsin, you know, issued the standards in 2018, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah. So, as you know, this theater and drama does not have its own standalone. And that is a piece that we've had some conversation. It doesn't fit within music, because our current instructor is in the music department. You know, so that's probably where we'll take that on, is at that point in time. We have not solidified a time for that, not at all.
Is it? I mean, I guess the next question would be, when would we know? And where that's gonna go, for sure?
Sure. You know, I can circle back with the board, based on some discussions with the instructors. We actually have an additional staff member who's gonna be teaching some of that this year. You know, that's, that's an area that we, on the agenda, or on the rotation through that cycle.
So, Brian, right now, music is scheduled for 2022, 2023, and it's likely to fit in there, you're thinking?
Anybody else? Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. Okay. One forty-six investment report.
Okay, so this is a new report we've never had before, but we thought it would be nice to highlight how much we have in Fund Forty-Six Investment Interest Earnings. So, the attached report is the projected earnings for 2019, from January first through December. We have our funds invested in both CDs, certificates of deposit, and then also in our money market account. And ADM has broken down the actual interest from January first through July thirty-first, and then for both of those accounts. And then the August first through December thirty-first is a estimate. So, the total estimated 2019 interest income is projected to be forty-two thousand, three hundred, twenty-one dollars and thirteen and fourteen cents. I took a look at what we've received in, in interest through December of 2018, and so far, we've received in just under thirty-three thousand, became a net thirty-two five. So, almost, you know, almost seventy-five thousand dollars alone in investment interest in that account. And, and this does not include the excess payment we just made at the end of July. The statements weren't available yet. They won't be out until September fifteenth. So, some, some good income we've generated from these investments.
David.
Are the CDs typically around a year at a time? Is that how you set them off?
They're all staggered. They, some are, some are six months, some are out a year, some are eighteen months. It just depended on when the contributions were made, and when we want those funds available, and what the highest interest rate was at the time.
I see. I thought someone, I thought they were all year. I see. Some of them were even two years. Just curious. For availability.
Correct, correct. We started this fund, this is for our capital maintenance projects. And we started this fund in the fourteen, fifteen school year, so we can start to expend those funds in the spring, late spring of 2020. And so, we wanna make sure we have enough funds available as projects start coming due. So, Kevin and I will be monitoring that closely, to make sure that we have adequate funds available when we need them.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking at the money market investment, it's not like a super great return. I notice that BMO in town puts out two-point-three-five percent, which is actually pretty significant over a longer period of time. So, I don't know, like, how often you review which companies you're investing with. But when I looked over at some comparable rates you could get, it seemed like they're a lot more competitive. They were rated a little bit higher in terms of best money markets available for getting funds out, but also returning when you invest as well. I think a lot of them are coming at a two-point-four, two-point-three-five, and two-point-two, and that made it into the highest category of revenue.
Something we can check into.
Jim?
With Star Park, it mounts around like a yoyo right now. How are we protected from loss of earnings?
Well, these are, these are CDs, so not, we're not...
Well, they're fixed rate for the...
Yeah, yeah. Correct.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Even the money market is.
Okay.
Chris?
I have a question about, not where it's ruled in order.
Okay.
It's out of order. But when Brian was giving his elephant presentation, I did have some questions about the language arts program. I thought we were going through them separately, and I didn't know we were going through them a lot once. Is this something that I should entertain questions with Brian outside of the meeting, or is it probably too late to go back and ask those questions, since we move on to the next item on the agenda, I think? And I should just keep my mouth shut. So, that's what I'm doing now. I like to talk to Brian outside of, outside of the meeting, because we can't circle back.
I don't know. David, you're the master of...
Oh, come on. I'd say it's the president's.
Okay.
President's.
Well, if you have a question, maybe somebody else has the same question, so go ahead.
Okay. This is a question about the language arts program. It's really hard to give kids seven weeks' worth of language instruction, and then leave the rest of the school year to other things. Do we ever do any research on how we can maybe clump those together to get a more prolonged experience in language arts? I know some of the things are kind of scattered, because of cultural immersion, which is great, and try to do intercultural competency, which is awesome. But in terms of building language proficiency, it seems pretty hard to give seven weeks, sixth grade, seventh grade, and seventh grade, and expect to have a long-term impact on what kind of language acquisition skills of the students.
So, you're referring to the world language program?
Yeah.
At the middle school, correct?
Like, sometimes clumping things together to reinforce the experience can have a much better impact on the long-term outcomes. We're thinking about what, you know, those language arts programs you're really interested to do.
Yeah. So, you, you bring up many of the points that when we did the program review, we had some very good discussion around. So, one of the things that we had identified as an area for next step is investigating what, what possibilities for longer instruction in world languages could look like at the middle school, recognizing the constraints of the schedule that we currently have. There was a period of time where there was a full year of global languages offered at the middle school, when some changes were made preceding my time in the district. That's probably ten years ago, nine years ago. The current schedule that we have came into play. So, it is something that, you know, we've had some discussion as to what that could look like, recognizing that it would require making some other changes. So, you know, I don't have a solution to put forward to the board. We've had some initial conversation. I know the middle school made changes to their schedule going into last school year, and they continue to look at what that would look like. You know, the reality is, in our current rotation, it probably would be in having our middle school students make some choices as to if they were to take a world language course, and what that would come at the expense of. And we take a look at the on-court offerings, and where would that fit? So, unless we do some different type of arrangement as far as schedule at the middle school, that's kind of where we land at that point, at, at this point.
All right. Letter E, discuss, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, discuss process and timeline at the 2020 medical insurance.
So, I shared the timeline with the board, and we're very fortunate. We've had really good luck. We've also had very good consumers in our school district. We're anticipating a very competitive renewal. Yeah, I don't need to read this to the board, but do any board members have any questions or any suggestions?
Chris? I had, is this, I get some feedback from some teachers about how they've experienced maybe both sitting in, I can pull this up, because the co-pays that we're experiencing out there right now are, they're burdensome. And the general perception is, is that their co-pays are going up. I don't know if that's actually true or not, but that's the feedback that I've been getting from people, is that it's hard to be able to afford the co-pays, and it seems as if they're going up. And there was also restrictions on people to have special care with the medical. So, I don't know if you must put out, like, surveys to the staff to see how they feel what's going on, but that's just the people that have been speaking to me about what their experience was with this particular plan.
I think it'd be helpful if the people you're speaking with, if you would direct them to either the health insurance committee. We do have a committee meeting of staff members that'll be meeting here in September. But the plan design has changed in a few years now. We've also been able to hold our premiums flat. So, yeah, health insurance is very expensive. It's, it's difficult with the coinsurance and all that, but the fact that we've been able to hold the premiums flat should provide an opportunity to make it a little less painful. But again, I think if they speak with their insurance reps, that's probably the best place to go.
Just to clarify, there hasn't been any change in deductibles or co-pays for probably three or four years, correct?
Right, but the plan design stayed the same. And, you know, we, we had a major change, I think it was five years ago now. And we did a lot of work surveying the staff about the importance of, of different things, and balancing choice versus comprehensive coverage, and a lot of other items. And we've had three good reviews on what we got going on.
If I remember right, it's also two-tiered, isn't it? Like, there's a tier one, and then there's a tier two for...
Right.
Like, they have more choices.
Right. Yeah, we're part of an ACO, and that's the base plan for everybody who qualifies for insurance. But if people are ready to purchase a more comprehensive plan, I think it's a ten percent upcharge on the premium, but we do have that available as well.
So, the change that they're referring to is probably the change that happened five years ago, when they got the new plan, and they're still complaining about a bold change that costs a little bit of money. Does that sound about right to you?
I don't know who you talked with, Chris. I...
No, no, I'm just asking. Their, their co-pays deductibles did go up when they got the new plan.
I, I have to review that. That was like five years ago. I, I don't recall that being a factor.
Chris?
I think that's what you're hearing, Chris. I mean, I'm still getting complaints as a provider from group health themselves from a dozen years ago, so my guess is that's probably what it is.
David?
We are still paying eighty-eight percent, right, for the premiums?
Yes, for full-time employees.
And I remember Act Ten, you know, came through and paid us pay, paid the employee paying more percent of insurance, so that also could have had any effect as well.
Yeah, I, I think the headlines may be getting buried in the sand a little bit. The headline here is that we're gonna be on our, I believe it's fourth year in a row of no premium increase. And that's pretty much unheard of. And then when you look at the status of our self-insured fund and where it's at, I would anticipate that we would have additional years of holding our premiums down. So, to me, that's really the headline. We are providing very good coverage. And yes, every plan has some limitations to it. And I think the decisions that we've made, and the great job that we've done with our wellness plan in the school district, the great job our staff has done at directing their service, being smart about, you know, when they use certain services like emergency visits, urgent care visits, things like that, I really think has made a large difference. When I walked in here, so about six years ago, our health insurance helped, I almost fell off my chair. It was not a good situation. But working with our staff, with the school board, with our consultants, we, we made some changes that have really worked out well and provide stability. You know, that's one thing that we heard over and over, is stability is very important, especially when you're talking about people's healthcare. And I know not only organizations can say that they have the same plan design and the same provider that, like we have over the last few years, and I hope we're able to continue that.
Well, you do have a lot of babies coming to this after this year, so. Which is good.
My understanding is that...
Long-term payoff.
I see some math over there, like, oh, no.
We are anticipating over a dozen, we are anticipating over, over a dozen maternity or paternity leaves this year. And sometimes those expenses may be high. You know, a lot of times, they're more of a one-time expense, you know, whereas if you have the recurring medical issues, those are the ones that we try to work towards preventing and monitoring through our wellness plan.
Jim points out, the pupil count will go up eventually, too.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that leads us right into the next thing. Discuss improving wages for substitute employees. And I'm guessing that is kind of a piggyback, because we do are going to need some subs for these maternity leaves. Or after, at least, David?
Yeah, Sam and I have worked on this together, and you're all aware. There's a shortage, especially in the substitute teacher pool. And a couple of our subs that worked many days last year are no longer available, taking more... more permanent positions. We've talked with our staff. We've, you know, been proactive in terms of our advertising. We also have a new model at the high school that, you know, while it hasn't gone perfectly, we think that it has benefited the availability of our sub pools and our ability to fill positions throughout the school district. However, even with that being said, knowing how many absences we're looking at, we've really been studying, you know, area pay. We've also been studying, you know, different ideas, different potential solutions to do what we can to ensure that we can support our students and support our staff members when substitutes are needed. And if you look at the numbers, even though our pay is, you know, right around the median, when you look at other areas of schools, we do think that this is an area where an investment could be a wise investment. Unlike some schools that, you know, maybe raise some pay every five to 10 years, and they'll, they'll raise it in one big chunk, we've indexed ours over the last several years, so ours continues to incrementally increase. But when you look at the situation we're in, I don't think incremental increase is going to do enough to have a high impact, especially in this year of high need. I also think that when we look at the long-term subbing, you can see that's one where we aren't very close to the median, and I think that's something that we're going to have to approach. We talked about, you know, a solution, for instance, where we want to hire one or two full-time people and just, you know, make them available every single day because we anticipate that we need, you know, anyone from eight to 10 subs a day. The challenge there is, well, that might fill two of the positions. You know, you might be taking two of your highest filling people out of your pool, and then you're left, yourself with even more of a problem, and you've invested all these resources. We think a more prudent solution that will be more effective would be to increase pay across the board and hopefully help recruit, retain, and fill those vacancies. Sam, is there anything that you want to add based on the discussions we've had?
I think the only other thing is talking a little bit about possibly providing an incentive for our substitutes that they would get an additional, maybe $10. Again, these are $10 per day if after 30 days of subbing. So trying to build some longevity with our substitutes that, and keep them coming back so that they can work toward that 30 days and then get an increase in their daily wage beyond that 30 days. And so that's really, our goal is to try to, to deepen our pool and make more substitutes available, make our district more appealing to our substitutes than maybe taking something in another district.
So to recap, the recommendations that we are looking for input on, first would be to increase the daily rate for substitute teachers. Right now, it's $108.08. We would look to increase that to $115.00 a day. We anticipate the cost to be around $12,000. Increasing the long-term pay from $128.52 to $211.86, and then bumping the starting, or the length of those long-term subs to 20 days. That does go retroactive when they start, so we don't think it'll have a large impact in terms of how many people qualify for the long-term rate, but it would make it more consistent of what we're seeing at both Eau Claire and Alkmaude. We think that would cost approximately $34,752. And then, like Sam mentioned, provide incentives for those people who are going to sub and fill subbing positions for 30 days or more, and provide an incentive of an additional $10.00 a day. We anticipate that to cost about $8,000. Other steps also aligned with that 30-day, we provide an activities pass and access to our, our pool and field house for those subs who worked 30 days or more in that year or the prior year. So that would be some consistency with that.
Quinn?
Maybe I missed it somewhere, but how big is the pool right now? How many subs do we have available? Like, for instance, this year compared to last year, and if it was in the pack and I missed it, I apologize, but...
No, we haven't, we're still bringing subs on, so that's kind of, right now is a critical time, and so we haven't looked at that. I, you know, I can tell you right now, just looking at my, my spreadsheet, I've got probably around 70, 70 subs, but that's including some people who are, you know, just food service or just clerical, but most, and then also special ed, so it, it involves more than just the teacher subs.
I know in talking to some of the teachers, one of the things they relate is having a sub that they are used to. So like if they're teaching business, they get a sub that is familiar, maybe a retired business teacher. If they're teaching tech ed, they get someone who is familiar with that subject at least. Do you have it broken down by that or not necessarily as far as what we have available for subs?
Yes, we do track what their degree certification is, and also keep in mind that not all of our substitutes have education degrees. We do have several of our subs that have maybe a four-year degree. There is a pathway now that the DPI has provided for more people to become, to get those three-year short-term substitute licenses and be able to sub within our district. They do have a requirement at this point that they, that any substitutes that don't have a teaching degree have to take a substitute training course, which I think is, is very helpful. So with regard to those, those subs that they, they prefer, we have a way to, to make sure that they're able to do that if they want to request a specific sub.
And then do you have kind of like an exit interview? So if you've got subs that have worked for us in the past, why are they leaving? What are, why are we losing? Is it just they're retiring and staying with grandkids, or what?
Usually we know that. I don't have a formal exit interview that I do with them, but a lot of times we know, this year in particular, as, as Joe alluded to, three of our major subs, people that took on most of our days last year got permanent positions within the district, and then one got a position in another district. So they, they had a significant number, recovered a significant, significant number of days for us.
And we've been fortunate. There's been many of people on our sub list who have ended up being hired in our district full-time. And, you know, but that, that sub list is fluctuating quite a bit, you know, a lot of times new graduates in January were able to add to the list. But despite all that, it's very clear, like I, I kind of chuckled when you said that about having, you know, a retired teacher in a certain area, because that's how it used to be. You know, I remember that in high school. I remember when I was a teacher, yeah, I know exactly who I was going to call, and, and they would be there. You could ask a lot of principals, well, that would absolutely 100% be preferred in many cases. There's a lot of times, you know, we're pulling a FIAE teacher and canceling elementary FIAE class because, you know, we don't have a second grade teacher, or, you know, that's just one example. It could be, you know, some other specialist. And it's, it's to the point where teachers have missed a lot of prep periods at the high school. You know, again, that's why we were responsible for the high school. But at the other areas, we have teachers missing prep period in finding time, or simply having to cancel classes or in some cases, some services because subs just can't be called.
Just throw this out there. Is going to 115 a day enough? And just kind of looking at the chart, Baldwin Woodville's at 120 a day. Do you think your day merit wasn't higher like Matthew Baldwin, and how much would that cost?
Well, to go to 115, I'm going to do some math in my head here.
Okay.
To go to 115, that's about a $7.00 increase, and that's going to cost us about $12,000. Okay, so you can kind of estimate what it would be. I, you know, the higher the better in terms of our ability to recruit. What you also have to remember though is this is something that would be really hard to back out of the budget.
Right.
You know, and in the, in the event that the budget gets tighter, you're probably looking at cutting staff or programming before you reduce subpay. So I'd be a little cautious, but it's not a bad thought because I, I do think that you're going to see some of these other schools on the list continue to increase theirs as well. But Eau Claire's at 110 right now, and if we were at 115, I think that would be a good spot to be.
Just clarification on the long-term subs, that's 20 days in the same position with the same teacher?
Correct.
And the 30-day bonus is anytime during the calendar year if they accumulate 30 days?
Correct, yeah, nine consecutive days in, in a long-term position.
And then, do you know the ratio of long-term subs to regular subs? I mean, is it by the end of the year, is it 90% to 10% or?
That we would have, like, I would say, without having ever investigated that, that's probably a pretty accurate...
Long-term is a small percentage.
Yes, with the exception of this year.
What do we, that's right. 12 is a real high number for us for the number of paternity, paternity leaves. Usually it's about half of that or so?
Yeah, if even that, yes.
Tricia?
Just for point of reference, I mean, that, that you should know this, but I know Eau Claire, I've seen those signs where it talks about hiring agencies. So when, is that what they do for all of their subs? Do they have this agency that takes, okay, so when we're looking at the 110, is that the actual cost? Is that the cost that they, they pay the agency? Like, how does that work?
That's a good question. So I've investigated that a little bit. I've met with Edustaff, so they're a staffing company. They, and they contract with the school district. They're, what I met with them, what they told me is that their fee basically is 24%. So they take whatever our daily wages and then add 24% to that. There's another, another company called Teachers on Call, and I reached out to them, and I have a phone conversation scheduled for this week just to look at that, to see what they, you know, what they, what their cost would be and what their services would look like. So I am investigating that a little bit. When you take into consideration the things that they take care of that we are currently doing with regard to staffing, that's, that's one of the things that we have to really look at the cost and see if it would outweigh what they are charging.
Just as a follow-up to that, so they absorb the liability too?
Yes, they do. Yeah, workers' comp and, and all of that. So they take that off of, off of the district. So it is somewhat appealing, but again, it has to be cost-effective.
And it's not sub-able either, you know, even if you go with one of those companies, you're not guaranteed to be filled?
No, I, in having the conversation with their rep, asked him about how he would go about filling when there wasn't a, when there wasn't a sub, and he said basically that's on him. So they have, at that point, and again, this was last year, they had one person who was doing that for the entire Eau Claire school district. So when you contract with the service, you want to also make sure that you know what you're getting.
So right now, our plan, you know, we'll continue to think about this and continue to do some investigation, but our plan would be at the next meeting to go ahead and bring forward the recommendation and ask the board for your consideration.
I'm going along to discussion on G, Boys and Girls Club contract extension.
Coming up on December 31st, the performance contract we have with the Boys and Girls Club will be expiring. We're very pleased with the service that the Boys and Girls Club has provided. You can see that not only do we have the service agreement, but just today, actually, I was given a five-year plan and also prior to outcomes report. So we, we will be recommending that the board extend the contract. My recommendation would be to extend it for five years to allow both the school district and the Boys and Girls Club to, you know, make plans for the future.
Were there any major changes in the contract?
No, just, oh, just the length.
Nope.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Very none, I believe we'll bring it back.
Yes, I'll bring it back for your approval. Thank you.
Okay, I'm planning for the 2020 Mow Schools Conference.
As you know, the Mow Schools Conference has been a big success for our school district. Our staff has really valued it. We would like to go again. We do plan to build that into the budget. This year, we are also planning to have our contingent present. Brian has been brainstorming with some of the lead team members. We're going to be talking to the principals tomorrow. We're very proud of the work we've done in the area of SEL, also our continuous improvement. Brian, was there one other thing that they missed?
Our mental health.
Yeah, so we, we think we have some really good stuff to present, but we also know that our staff members that go bring back a lot, and are there any concerns with that idea? Thank you.
Okay, and then, I'm planning for 2020 State Education Convention.
Board members, if you would like to go, please make sure you talk to Jamie. We've already put a block on some motel rooms. We want to make sure, but for our new board members, it's a very good conference. It's, it's very worth it to learn more about being a board member, to network with your colleagues from across the state, and then there's very good presentations to help you have a better understanding of not only being a board member, but how the educational system works.
Yes, and pretty soon on the state convention website, you're going to have a form that I can print off that shows the pre-conference and that kind of thing. So I'm going to wait for that, and then I'll have that out to you all. You can fill it out if you're going to go. Yeah, I know, like I know that you're going, but registration's signed, I'm, yeah, so...
And that's where we put on September Agenda One, to make sure we reserve motel rooms. Two, so that you can get other calendars. We know how busy we are, and we know it won't work for everybody, but if it does, that'd be great.
And then, Jay, I'm reliving next meeting dates, board committees, and reports. And there's a confusion about...
Oh, now I see it.
About, about the meeting. Unless it was changed, is it, is it the 14th and the 28th, or is it the 7th and the 23rd?
We didn't change that meeting, did we?
No.
It should have been the 14th.
And it's also on the website, on the, on the page of the website, it's the 14th and the 28th.
I will set up.
So you're not going to miss a meeting?
I know, I was like, do it.
So I just want to point that out, that, that is wrong. I don't know, in four docs, but, so it will be changed, it was never changed to begin with. So it will be the, the, actually, next meeting will be the 23rd of September, and then in October, it'll be the 14th and the 28th. Any questions? That brings us, last but not least, to the bookstore.
Principals, directors, thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody. Hanging out. Good luck.